Okay, so a call in order at 10 after seven. And can I get a motion to adjut?
I will drop.
You'll drop it. Thank you very much. And then we have minutes. Do you have any other questions or corrections? I didn't have time to print tonight. Does anybody need a printout?
They were in that link that.
I have them up right here.
You sent us the link.
I can print all this stuff out really quick. Do you guys want me to?
Yeah.
I thought you were sending her the link and then for next time I would be.
It was confusion. I'm not sure.
I'm sure that's what you said. I'm sure you're right. I misunderstood.
Anyway. Second.
One thing about the minutes, I am not going to be here next month for the meeting. So if somebody would be willing to take the minutes in my absence, that would be really great. Ari. Yeah. Yes.
All right, so we'll move into the director.
Yes, so wait a few. So lots of programs set up for next month. You can see them on the report. Programs are still going well. We did the Halloween costume and ornament decoration swap, but we still have some extra stuff over here, but we had 26 felt and 11 kids come to that. So that was a pretty good number. The embroidery class was also seems to be pretty successful. So we're going to actually do another one. And it's going to be doing folk art stars with embroidery and felt. So they should be cool. Storytime's still going strong. We only had six kids though today or this week. That's a little more unusual, but okay. Circulation is still staying about the same. It actually went up for the children's books. We've been encouraging parents to take books out during storytime. And I think they're actually doing some of that. So but it's about the same and in terms of but it is up from last year. If you look at the circulation of physical items, we are definitely higher than we were last year. So that's actually nice to see too. And our visits to the libraries are also about the same. We went up actually almost about 100 visits from last year at this time. So patterns are working well. We did have an increase of six. We had six new patrons, adults and three new kids. And two new out of system adult patrons registered for library cards, which is a great number for one month. We're already at 47 new people per for the year or 47 new adults for the year. You can see the collection development. Okay, so some of the things that I've been doing this month, which is I met with a woman named Cody Bluefields with the summer food program. Apparently, Stevie Town was one of the first libraries in the state to provide summer meals for kids. So she was doing a blog post or something like that for it. So we just talked about it. During that time, we talked about there's a new program being offered for summer meals called rural non-congregate meals where we can just give it out. We don't have to. Right now, the rule is you eat the food where you're at. You can't take it away. But this non-congregate thing might be something where we can just offer it and people can take it and go. And I'm hoping that we can have it here at the library so that because I think some people are a little intimidated to go to summer camp. So I'd like to see if I can't find more people to get the food to. So I'm working with Debbie Fleming right now on how we can make that work because there's a it might be logistically that the state will say something about. You know, because there's already one food site, have another food site within the same town, but we're we're going to work on that. So that's something that's kind of in the plans. And I met with her, Cody and Debbie and two other people or another library and another like doing a Zoom meeting to talk about all that stuff. So. It's just for kids. It's 18 and younger. So when we did talk to about the fact that the summer meals for the older kids aren't really enough, it's not providing because they get the same amount of food as the younger kids, you know, however wise they need more. So I'm going to talk to well, because Debbie is still involved in it all is doing all that stuff. She's gonna, we're going to talk about how we can maybe get the older kids extra food instead of like maybe order two meals for them, but I don't know if the county will reimburse for it. So we'll have to be. They do at the school, but not here with that. And that's part of why I wanted to do summer food here is because during the summertime, you don't have the backpack program. So. I have no idea how they do it. It's all that's all.
The food pantry you use is Latham.
Because I mean, you buy the backpack and every weekend it takes home enough to feed the entire family.
Yeah, that's I know they do that at the school as well. So yeah, works out pretty well.
About 240 bucks each. Certainly worth a while.
Are there any concerns with storage and stuff?
Well, that's what we would have to work on. But I don't think so. I think because it would be a smaller number than what the camp is doing. Our refrigerator should should work. And even if we have to pull down the smaller one too, we can do that. But again, I don't know if this is even going to happen. So we'll see. So we've had some work done in the library. Bob Nichols, that is a new door right there and it shuts very nicely and there's no holes in it anymore. So that went well. He also installed the new AEB device, which is over by the bathroom on the wall. He also looked at three. We have three broken windows that need to be replaced. He just sent me a the cost of the windows isn't themselves. So the three windows be, I think it was $600 altogether. And then the labor, he didn't give me a quote yet for that. So I'm gonna, he said he'll get that to me soon. So we can decide whether or not we want to work on that. Right now, I mean, it's not like a absolute necessity. The only thing is that the window in my office doesn't open at all. So let's see, I don't know, which is fine. And it's the winter time. So I don't really care. Potentially. Yeah.
So it's yours across from you in the storage room. If that's broken.
Right. And then there's and then the one right here. There's one here where the tracks are completely busted off and you can't move it at all. So. Yeah. So yeah, I'll get that to everybody once we get that.
Do it weather wise or anything like, is it a project where you're going to be like, we'll get done quickly enough that you could do it.
I don't know. I think I'd have to talk to him. He kind of was iffy about whether or not he would want to do it now or wait until this week. So. Yeah, whether or not he will. Oh, wow. Well, I'll ask him and see what he what he says. Dean Fagan with Next Face Solar fixed our solar panels because I called six different companies and all of them said, if you don't, if we didn't install them, we won't work on them. So but Dean was great. He came right over. He waived his fee for us. So we didn't pay for anything. Also, we had to do any show me what to do in case it happens again, so I can reset the system. So we could try and make that work again. He doesn't think though that it's a big issue because it only happened one time and it was a small, you know, it lasted for a long time. So hopefully it's just a small little thing. We do, he did recommend that we get a internet module that we would need to pay about 100 or excuse me, $200 for so that I can then monitor the system over the internet. Right now, all I know is if the electricity bill comes up really high, then it's not working.
It's a one time fee?
A one time fee.
Of 100?
200. So that's something I think we should.
I have a N-phase, you know, front porch and it works really well. It's really, it looks at, it's actually like it looks into the the wall and internet and then it feeds and I get a monthly report. So I know right away if something's not functioning well.
This is a really, it's an old system. So he said there was some kind of a something. We couldn't use N-phase because I think it was a different company. I don't remember, but.
Back report that you get, this is very helpful.
No, yeah, I would absolutely think that that's something I would like to get. So. So I guess I don't know if I, if you guys need to vote on that or if you want me to just go ahead with it. It's. We don't, we never get credit. No, we only, we are able to offset enough that we only pay like 30 or 40 bucks a month for electricity, but we've never made so much so that we've gotten credits before. Which was interesting because I had to give information to this insurance carrier because they found out we have solar panels and wanted to know all the information about them. So Dean was able to help me answer questions that I had no clue. How many watts does that? That's not my thing. But they did ask if we have, if we get money. I've had two meetings with Paul. The first one, we talked about he needed or he didn't need, but he said it would be really helpful if I could find any old drawings that we might have with detailed measurements. So because this building was new, we should have had architectural drawings, like very detailed ones, which would have helped him with the next phase of what we're doing. All I could find was some very general drawings that had very, he's like they were not done by an architect and they were not stamped by an architect. There's definitely, definitely some kind of a computer program, but it was it said, he said it will help him, but not. So, okay, so they're going to come down and take measurements, but we also needed to see if we had a what was it called? A hazardous materials or environmental survey study that might have happened, but I can't find any. I searched through all of our records, can't find anything that had that, which is kind of strange because they shouldn't have had to do that with this building, but.
Is there a timeframe on those?
Well, I don't know. I think I don't think so. Yeah, I'm not sure. So that was another thing I tried to find. I did, I found out why we don't have architect architectural drawings for this place because of it was, they decided not to go with an architect when they built this building because it was going to cost too much money. So they just used wasn't. Yeah. So they used Gary Sharp as the contractor and then it ended up just taking, I don't know where it went from there, but I just know that that was why we didn't have anything. Which was very surprising to Paul. So then I met with him today. Let's see, what we're going to do is Megan, who is from his office, is going to come down here. I just got an email from her sometime next week and she's going to start taking the detailed measurements and so we get the designs going. We were going to have it so that Paul was going to contact some firms to get proposals for the hazardous material, like a bids for the the survey. But first Megan's going to come down, see what she sees and then we're gonna, then we'll contact the, then they will contact the firms and try and get us some bits. So. I didn't even ask.
That's going to be separate.
That's going to be another.
Anything in that project budget?
Right. So, yeah, I didn't even ask. It's just like.
What did he call the little supplemental budget? What did he call it?
I don't remember.
When he said there was like usually five or $6,000 put to the side that you would apply to.
So hopefully that will, yeah. The other thing that he suggested to do, instead of them hiring an engineer to do the electricity and mechanical stuff in the room. He suggested that we, because we've already gotten quotes from Mike, Colleen and John Laporta to either hire them or just hire our own people to do those things. They would have the sketches and the drawings and make it all the, you know, figuring it all out. But he said it would be cheaper if we just go with people we know already. And then we're not using an engineering firm to do the drawings and then they're doing hiring then another, or excuse me, another engineer and another mechanical guy. So his suggestion was to just.
And they would work with the general.
Yeah, yeah, they would work with the general contractor. Yep. Yep. That's what he said. So. And the other thing too is that I was, I thought that I was told and I realized that I was completely wrong, that money for this project should come maybe sometime this fall. I had thought that it was coming next fall, which but I had the, for some reason I had in my head that we only completed the application in 24 and that we were patient for 24, 25 cycle, but we're not for 23, 24. So. Yeah. So I almost gave Paul a heart attack when I said to him that money wasn't going to be here until next year. He was just like, um, then we shouldn't be doing anything. Yes, it has to be a completely separate account and we have to start, to the grant, we have to start work within 180 days of proceeding.
So really?
That's a good question. I think. We can, I think we can ask for an extension.
They're already bidding on larger contracts. It would be next summer is what he was saying.
Potentially. Yeah. I think we can get. So as of the date of this approval, which was October 1st, assurance was given that project would begin 180 days of approval if the project is not already underway. Please notify Natalie, Donna. If you're unable to meet this deadline or if there are changes to the approved project. So. It is. So I would assume that that means that we're, we're okay, but I don't know if they actually mean physical work or so I can contact her and find out. I keep, I'm sure he would. So I can talk to him again. So that's where we are with the construction project at this point. Then let's see, brand and marketing meetings, DA meeting, we did meet about the equity challenge. Because there have been a few libraries who've actually started it. Haven't had time to actually start it, but I've decided that I'm going to see if I can't make it project for each staff member to do when they're here is to take on one aspect of the equity challenge and we're just kind of work on it throughout the year.
That's a really good idea, like having staff involved in it.
That, that's the hope is that it'll work out that way. The equity challenge, it was, I mean, it was a lot of good information and things that I need to think about in terms of accessibility services, you know? Do we have an adaptive mouse and keyboard if somebody comes in and they can't use our, you know, that stuff, all these little things, you know, adaptive. Yeah, keyboards and the mouse. There was something else too. The websites accessibility, I have to talk about that, you know, all these different things, but the ADA also has a checklist that we can use. Also to maybe have a hearing assistant device that we can give, let people use when there's a program or that kind of thing. So we're going to work on that. And then the regular meeting was just stuff. Sorry. Then we've met with Ari and I met with Tammy Madden. I have handed over all old and current files to the town and they are now in charge of something happens. Done. They have everything. I did though say. I think they did, but I think Jen was able to, Jen, Jen from, that's what was going to work on that. So I guess that's awesome. So she has all the information. And then I also got her to agree to do a footprint for us while we were doing all that stuff. So she's going to help out with the program. Let's see, met with the random marketing and met with the committee about the holiday party. So it's been a busy. And then the other thing I did do that I forgot to put on here is that I went to another conference or a training conference on today's Thursday, Wednesday, and it was about sexual reproduction and what was it? It's about materials for the library and how do we have access to everything? Oh, sorry. It's been a long week, guys. That I can't help you on. Sexuality and reproductive operations and how we do that stuff in the library. So I'm going to be actually reviewing our collections. I don't think we have much of one. You know, just how we can make sure that things are updated and how do you make things accessible and challenges you might face if you put some of this stuff out and show people what you're doing. You know, so it was a very good, it was a really good conference. So I'm not gonna you know, when life gets a little bit less crazy, I'll start doing that as well. So. And I do have the newest calendars for November and December. All set, ready to go. So if anyone wants to see those, you can pass those on as well. I think that's it. I'm sorry. There is, there's a lot going on that we're gonna, so. That's, that's that. Oh, and I'm not going to be here for the holiday market or the lighted parade as I'm going to New Mexico with my family to see my sister-in-law and brother-in-law. So I hope there'll be a good trip. We're going hiking and we'll see how that goes. We're going Santa Fe, then north of Santa Fe, then down to, then down to, all the way down to White Sands.
Isn't that the greatest?
I can't.
You will adore.
Oh, I've been to, we've been. I've been there before and it was great. So we're not going to spend too much time. That's what we're doing. We're going up the tram and then going to hike back down. Wheeler Peak we're doing and then we're doing a couple and then we're doing the Alcoy Trail at White Sands. So should be fun. So. Not necessarily.
Once again, not necessarily.
Yeah. Non-travel, sorry.
Yeah, I want to go ahead and start with the account changes. These are, these are our current balances. They're on the link if you want to see them. They are after the following amounts were transferred out from our or it's called our business choice, but it's the special, special accounts. We pulled 30,000 out of there. We pulled 35,000 out of our money market and we pulled 15,000, 35,000 out of the money market and 15,000 out of the business money market to create $80,000 CDs. The rate on the CD is 4.16%. See if you got here. We've got 4.261%. Maturity date is April the 10th of 2025. It is a totally liquid. We go in there and get it if we need it. We didn't put that much in out of the money market because we figured or the business money market because we want to make sure we can cover expenses for the end of the year and the first couple of months.
Sorry, what did you say the maturity was?
The majority came out of the business. Maturity is April the 10th of 2025. Hopefully we'll be able to get it on the list of accounts. So we can see exactly how it is, you know, maturing. Because the one I, the one I have with Virture Bank, every time I go open my account, it gives me the amount that that CD is, you know, going. Well, it was, it was, I'm sorry it took so long. My life got away a little bit and then I was able to go over there and park it. It's off the foggy plate on the computer for an hour. Then he says, here you are. That's all I get? Yeah, that's all you get. Anyway, so the P and L in the green is where we're at on the current year. We still have surplus of $35,000, but we do have insurance to pay. Fuel oil will be coming, coming in pretty soon. We don't get a fuel oil contract. Do that. We just do a C O B. Because right now the rate is 2.7.
It's not good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So I did, I prepaid for our church at 3.19, which was 50 cents cheaper than anybody else with offering six weeks ago. We just got a fill last week from them. They gave me a deal for 2.70. So if you might want to get.
What did you say the rate was right or the price was right now?
2.70.
2.70.
We use H and L. We use H and L and they're, you know, some of these, I don't know if we all use it. They give you a nonprofit rate. We use Langendorf.
They do give us a discount.
We do give you a nonprofit discount. Yeah. And if you, if you follow up and say, what's the market rate right now, they may, it may be cheaper than it might be, you know. Anything under three bucks right now is a good deal. We've got 2.71. I mean, just in case, just to top it off. You know, I don't know how much you're going to lose in a year.
I might have to look at the records. I don't remember. I don't think we. Yeah, I don't know.
The heating oil, your budget is 3,500. So that would indicate to me that you may get 1,500 gallons or something like that. Based on your vegetables, 3,500.
Hopefully that'll go away as well. On a one, part of it'll go away because we'll still have the furnace here, but not the furnace there.
Is there going to be a split over there?
Over there, it's going to be the heat pump. I think so, yes.
Yeah, my contractor said, too bad. He said, I'm going to be. So other than that, we do have the insurance. Have they ever told you yet or not?
No.
We'll pick them up on
Usually December is when I get them.
So they're January 1st?
For most of them, I think, yeah.
Wouldn't it be mind if we can just, just the agenda and just continue to talk about budget for a minute while we're all looking at, thinking about numbers? So Richard, Kim and I, or actually.
You on camera?
Yeah. That's my fault because I got a call.
Wait for me to leave.
So, um, just talked about a couple of things, looking ahead for next year. Um, that we need to think about. So we never put together proposals yet, but just in terms of what we're going to have to try to do to balance them. So one of the major, it's not major, major, but it's big enough. One of the changes in revenue is gonna be that we won't be getting the four thousand dollars from the town. So that's already out. And that wasn't to cover supplies or anything like that. That was an administrative fee. So that is money we want to have in the budget. So we need to think about that. On the, excuse me, on the expenses side, Kim identified, we're having some small increases in things like our dues. Pop your rental has gone up a little bit with the changes moving. But come up, you know, on the larger. Line items that we have to think about. So the zoo, the request is running out. So we have been using that for book purchases. And then that, this will be the last year that there's any money in there for that. So we're probably gonna be looking at significant increase in line item for book purchases, like up to forty-five hundred dollars.
So basically you haven't included the cost of books in the expenses on your, on your B and L.
It's there, but um. It is, it's in there.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
Cause it was, it's in the program expense area. So it's just a matter of you're pulling it from a different account. But it's still, it's still in the budget.
Um, it, no, it's, it's marked zero in the budget. We don't budget any money for that line.
When did that, when did we get that?
I think it was even more than that. Ten thousand. So we've been using it throughout. So yeah, I've been using about two thousand of it. Every year for the past five years. So we're, we're down to about eight hundred, I think. Oh, no. Around eight hundred, I think.
So it's gonna be something that we're. You know, a bit new for this year.
Alright, cause you, the way it's set up, you have twenty-eight hundred for books and then. Zero budget for the zoo, zoo books, whatever, but you still have twenty-eight hundred in the regular line item.
Right, right. The twenty-eight hundred is not gonna be enough.
I, I know there, so facility repairs, so. Time we talked, we didn't have any window estimates yet. So we know at least six hundred. I'm not sure what, we can anticipate official labor. But depending on when, um, if we're, if we're slotting that as a, you know, early spring kind of fix, that's gonna be. That's gonna impact our repairs. Um, and I think we have now, let's see, does this report include painting for the door?
Uh, it should. I'm pretty sure I had it in there. Cause I've already. It's under facility repairs. Turned it gone to eighty-nine. The total we've spent out on that one is, on facility repairs is twenty-six seventy-four. We had the new.
Yeah, I, I always hide it when I do these reports.
The um. Yeah, we've had furnace repairs this year. We've had new thermostats, light fixtures, repairing candles from the porch, the new door. We had a clogged septic line, which was a lot of fun. Um. And then replacement of a community room door. So we've had a bunch of repairs that we had to do this year for. That. So we're gonna have to put in the next. Session. So we're already, we are over on our repair budget for facilities. At. We've budgeted fifty, fifteen hundred and we're at twenty-six hundred.
And you figure for next year, if we were thinking of keeping the same fifteen hundred, we've always spent that already. If we plan to replace the windows. You know, you're probably there. So.
Yeah, the lawn care, we budgeted two thousand. We're at six thirty. Last year, anyway, I don't know where we're at this year.
Oh, the lawn care, yeah. Oh, and also I've got landscaping in here. We budgeted two thousand and we've only spent a hundred and five. So that's, that's a.
How much are we over for the funds right now?
Total, we're under for, uh, pairs of maintenance, we're, we're under the budget.
The facility repair line item, we're, we're about by nine hundred about, so we can.
Get it paid for this year.
I'll get in touch with them.
Yeah, that would be, that'll be very helpful. Cause you've still got about four thousand in the repairs maybe. Not, not line item, but total.
And then I think about the other big question right now is the insurance. Everything is, um, right, insurance market. Um, I'm a little nervous of asking about solar panels and things like, are they? Are they looking for what, why?
Yes, I know.
So that's gonna be the other unknown, you know, what's that gonna be? Um, I think otherwise, you know, most things we're thinking are, you know, around the same, nothing that's gonna be a major impact. It's always hard because we don't get our annual appeal numbers until after we. Do the budget. So it's our best guess. And this, for the twenty twenty-four budget, we really made that kind of a stretch goal. In terms of what we're gonna be, be, be bringing in for the annual appeal. So, um. You know, it would be hard at this point to say. Well, we can make up the difference. I think let's try to do better with our fundraising. We're not gonna have an idea. It'll be, it'll just be getting the idea of how we do on the trivia fundraiser. Um, we won't really have, we don't have results on the annual appeal. I wouldn't personally feel comfortable saying, yeah, we can, we can continue to push that number. By a lot. So, uh, just to say, I think next month we're gonna have to sort of do some reckoning around this. As we look at, as we look at the details. I mean, we might not have a lot of choice. A lot of things are just fixed costs and unless we're cutting back on things like our collections or our programs or things like that. It's tough to find an area where we can pair back. So. Hard to balance it without.
How much, how much is the liability in property?
I don't know what it's. It was a couple thousand, I think. I think it was around twenty-two. Let me just pull it up really quick. Um.
Went up fifteen percent?
Fifteen, but which is not bad.
Really?
No, not bad. If you have homeowners, you know.
So because the world is ending.
Well, yeah, basically, yeah. It was, it's about twenty-two hundred for your liability and property. I doubt your liability will go up.
Twenty-three fifty-six.
Guesstimate.
Oh, that was in twenty, yeah, that was in twenty-three.
They have, they have assured us that they will renew now.
Yes. Yes, they will. Can't, there, no one was willing to write a policy for it.
At all, no. And if you found somebody, it'd be double.
Yeah, she was looking, she looked at everything and, um, even the ones that have libraries already on their policies, they refuse to. Yep, um, because insurance right now is just crazy because of all the, um, it's weather related stuff. It's affecting all of us too. Exactly.
Part of that, but also partly nationwide.
Yeah, yeah.
The insurance are paying for their insurance companies.
Alright, so definitely a lot of the November moving will be. Cover that. Thank you, everybody. Uh, so we're drying it a little bit. Let's move on to maybe, we'll talk about brand and marketing. We're also gonna cover fundraising during that one. We won't have policies cause Scott's not here.
Yep, um, I think everybody saw my marketing report. Um. The press release for the trivia night went out on the twenty-third and as I think we. Talked about last time, we got the thumbs up for wine, beer and cider from Warren Twinnies. And, um. As long as our attendance is strong for this thing, which as of now, it's not feeling too comfortable. We have two, two people have said they're gonna come to our.
We also just sent the email out yesterday.
But we have had. Flyers and social media and. The press release, I know people are responsible in that, um, so, so far out.
Where, where are you posting the flyers?
Um, I, I, so far I put them in New Lebanon at the post office, um, at the, um. Laundromat, at Dave's, at the, the, uh, post office here, at, um. Mavericks. I just thought people are standing around waiting for things.
I'll send some out. Actually, I, I don't know why I didn't even think of this, but I'll send them out through the courier to all the different libraries that are in the area. So we can.
That'd be great. Yeah, because I think library people are likely to be interested in that type of. Um, I didn't go over there. Um, sure. I don't remember seeing one. Um, I can check it out, but you know, I mean, I went to Mavericks where there is.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Seems like if you're going to a restaurant and you're not standing around waiting, you know, well, I guess you could be for pizza. Anyway, I'll walk. I didn't.
I mean, I didn't know, I didn't know. When do they do their trivia night?
Yeah, I don't know.
Some of the same people might be interested.
That's what I was thinking is if you could get, somehow they could do an announcement, you know, the five hundred dollar prize should get some interest. Cause I don't know what they give them at Eminem, maybe a.
You get, you get to, like a table of food. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can ask Bill. Uh, he is interested, so. Who was the donor?
Anonymous. Sitting really close to.
It was, it wasn't a big house.
Anyway, if, if we. Richard's going to be emceeing. Cecilia's gonna be the counter. Mary Ann getting the bartend. Um. Scott Patterson is doing the musical entertainment and musical cues for the trivia. And he also came up with his trivia questions. Um, we all want to meet on November second. I think it sounds like a lot of people can't beat that. Um. But to kind of get things completely wrapped up, maybe run through what, what the process will be.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to get an idea to run through. Also, I'm gonna have a hundred, a hundred other trivia questions for us to look at.
So we are gonna meet on November second?
We are going to meet on November second. I know that it wasn't good to review timelines. Yeah, it's okay. Well, well, um, what time? Two o'clock, we, we said.
Will we meet any early? Like, I don't wanna change it for everybody, but I don't know.
I can, I can get there by one, no problem. Like noon? Could you do a noon?
That's the day of the swap or?
No, 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 Christmas swap is, I changed it. Actually, I put it to the twenty-third of November. No, I, I changed that. I decided to do it on the twenty-third just because, um. I was thinking, I won't have any kind of Christmas stuff out. I wanna know what my stuff is. To do it a little bit later, so it's closer to the time. So.
And we're gonna have a meeting over here or at that fell?
Here, yeah. Well, I think I mentioned here, if we can get in there.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah, cause you get a lay of the land. And you said John, John will be able to make the meeting. Is it, what's the, what's the other guy that's doing the music?
No, he said he couldn't make the meeting. It's got Winder camp. Yeah, I think Scott Connor's only know.
I might be able to, like, I can volunteer and come and work at it, but I, I also have some people that might. That kinda wanna do a ta- get a table. So would you want me, would you rather let me pay to?
I think, I think I'd rather. Get your friends involved with this and tell their friends. Trust me, she, we're just gonna, we're just gonna, hey, this question, okay, we're not gonna say what the answer is. How many mudslides were there in Chile in eighteen ninety-two? It's, it's in Trivial Pursuit, yes, yeah.
Trivia, like Jeopardy. He's applied for Jeopardy twice or three times.
Yeah, she probably, they probably. I mean, I don't think you're gonna get, I don't think you're gonna get signups until the week before. Like realistically. It's. I'm, just from programming, when it's free, people don't sign up until like the week before.
Like you're saying, you come on the second, I'm like, I'll tell you the day before. That means like that's the life that I'm in.
Yeah.
You know, I can't.
So you're, you're targeting what, a hundred, hundred, hundred people? Yeah, okay. I think you can probably get that.
Oh, we also, we also did postcards. Very cheap postcard thing. So. Totally go into people that we didn't have an email, like we pared it down. So it's people that we don't have an email address for, so we couldn't contact them. Um, and we will have extras that are coming to us and I'm hoping to get to people. So let's get it up to your friends that.
I need to get someone to bridge you on that.
I will actually send out a second email and I'll say space is limited.
Oh, yeah.
That way.
Yeah, good idea.
We're just saying, we're cutting it off the first hundred.
Honey, I talked to my sister today and she's, oh, I heard about the.
She heard about it.
She's like, ah, I was wondering if Vinnie wanted to, because Vinnie is like trivia.
Once, once again.
I don't think there's a reason why you guys can.
Once again.
Oh, wait, you're bartending, you're bartending. Oh, right. Well, Vinnie could, well, he's bartending too.
He has to.
Thank you, but you just have to try.
I wonder if Patty said she.
No, I mean, I would, I would urge you, if you have friends that wanna join with your team, that, that, like you said here, we would prefer that to, you know, we prefer to get the three other people, get four people joining it, but having one person working, it becomes a matter of math.
Uh, what else? I think that's kind of it for trivia at this point. Question? Yeah, we're gonna go through and decide on all the questions and make the final decision on.
Because how many, how many rounds? Were we talking three rounds?
We were talking.
Ten questions?
Three for each of the meal sections, so.
There's like ten questions per round.
That's what we were talking about because we were just figuring out timing and it seemed like.
And then you might have, you might. Then you might have some.
And that doesn't include Scott's music ones.
The music ones are the ones.
I think, I think.
Yeah, I mean, and we, we don't, we wanna, you ever wanna throw a softball to begin with, get a couple of softball games, be excited. Oh, we don't have to do this. And then, then you throw. Who's the only guy?
I think that's fine.
Yeah. Playing the Super Bowl and.
You got a month or so.
Okay, I wanna move on. Wanna move on to the annual appeal, everybody. Pleasant trees. Sure, sure. The Patty can do it, but. At the annual appeal, um, I interviewed Cheryl last weekend and did a first draft of the letter, which has been vastly improved by Jen and Kim. And there it is. So, um, we want, we need to get this thing out. We, we actually found that the cost of the mailing has gone down because Bex had made a, an error. So the total cost, if, if we go with the quantities that they were expecting based on last year is sixteen hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And I think the last time we talked about it, it was more like two thousand something.
Yeah.
Unpleasant.
Yeah, so very good news.
It's great news instead of. Follow, yeah.
So we just wanna have folks, um, take a read of that letter tonight. Cheryl has approved it. Again, just get her signature. Um, and then we've got, to just, the Kim provided calendar include and a sheet of services. I'm just gonna update that with the printer stuff. Cheryl had a suggestion for wording. Go over there, so.
I'm hoping to get that over to Bex to, to sign off on everything, get it over very early November and then have the thing mailed out.
Hopefully get it out sooner.
Sooner.
And I think we can get a lot of pieces over sooner. The problem is that I just have to update the database list because if they're going off of the number of, right, fifteen, twenty, whatever. You're not gonna wanna reprint them if we have, if we have more.
Right, right.
So I just kinda have a accurate number. So I have the list from Upper Hudson, Kim, of the new people this year. Started that today and I have tatshells from Jennifer Van Duren. So that's just kind of tedious check against what anyone's saying. But I hope I will be working on that, so. Goals to get that out as soon as possible so they have it, they have time, because there's always back and forth on that too, which, you know, which addresses are bad and.
I think we have things sort of squared away with holiday market already as to the number of people that goes vendors and what will be offering and who was gonna take care of the children's, uh, table and.
Well, we need to actually, so we get, is Dory gonna do it?
She said she would.
Um, and would you mention you were interested in helping? Dorian was children's table.
Um, and did you have your picture taken?
I did. I did. I, so I got half a bit finished. I've been a bitchy done. I still haven't finished the.
That's, don't worry about it. Um, and so that's kind of it for now with brand and marketing.
Real quick on holiday market.
Yeah.
So the, um, person, I reached out to the person who told me she was interested last year. Uh, having her back. Um, so I think she's not interested. And the new person that I was hoping to get, stained glass person, he's already posted his, his holidays and festivals. So, um, I don't think we're gonna have anybody new this year at this point. Um, and I don't know if you, Wyatt.
Oh, I don't know that I talked to him. Did you get, um, Marian Walther?
You said that she was.
She was.
You had eleven, right?
Uh, but mine was first.
Or was it eleven minus those two?
Hold on. That'll be ten.
So ten vendor.
How many did you have last year? Last year, I think we had.
Okay. And the kids' table.
Oh, no, we, we had eleven, I think. So there's two people I've gotta reach out to again from last year. They haven't.
Uh.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. There's too much going on. We do have two new people. Two new people who reached out from social media. So.
So are they part of the ten or are they?
No, so that'll be twelve. So if we have everybody in that, it's twelve, which is enough. Yeah, that's like, it's so rich all happened to me.
Is it happening to you, Richard?
This is the color I wear. Summer, winter.
Did we get approval on the annual meeting?
Not yet.
Oh.
Are, are the underlined parts things that are questions or?
There's. In case somebody's, um, you know, reading it very, very, yes.
We're following Deb's. And, uh, but if there's any, any underlines that you think don't make sense, please.
Or if they're gratuitous or too much.
Yep. Only thing that stood out to me. Starts a sentence with but, and we teach the kids, don't ever start a sentence with but and or because. So like people wait like, you know, not like.
We're trying to be a little bit like conversational.
Yeah.
Wait, no.
It's been researched and.
I would put Main Street back on Sykes first so that people know where that is.
Yes.
Oh, I'm gonna take it off. I'm gonna share a signature.
Now, part of me keeps thinking some of the underlines are too much, but then it doesn't seem to hurt.
Can do, I'll, I'll also try to find out. No, I'll jump in and see if they. Should have a period. Why are we emphasizing Sykes?
Is it the community hub part? Yes, it was, it, it created a, a story around how the girls kind of, it's become a community hub that, that Sykes was. And it also is for people who are long-term Stephen Brown people. So, you know, they felt warm about the place and, and it's, it's sort of coming full circle for Cheryl. But she worked there and now she sees people, it just created a story and you kind of need a.
Deborah's theory that having Cheryl. She would just. People that we don't necessarily get pulled as a library. And since we've made this push to get the additional. That we're mailing to everybody in town, um, that it might be a, you know, way to connect with people who, rather than our, some of the usual library things that we talk about, sorry, the different, like, you know, enrolled into it, yeah.
So I think, I think that's true, yeah.
I mean, it might pull the nostalgia. But there's a lot of like, it depends on who you're trying to target. The, the newer folks are like, what's Sykes Store? Where, you know, like it's rundown building now that looks like.
Well, that's kind of the point. It's a rundown building and now we can serve as that, that community hub that they used to. And I think it's just gonna pull in maybe some of the people that we don't, that don't know. And, um, even if you don't know what Sykes Store is, you can still read that it was a community center and now we're the community center.
And one thing that we didn't emphasize that Cheryl actually talked about was how she grew up in this town and yet she did not come to this library because she was over in April Park. Right. So there are a lot of people like that, I think, that even though we think it's central and everybody sees it and they drive by it every day, they don't really know what it is. So, so I think that might connect with those people.
I just, I was curious.
That was a good question.
I tend to the underlying personal. Can't say I like, did we have any underlying last year? Okay.
Like she said, I'm gonna say that it was like, it would be more of a conversation coming to Sykes Store.
That's just like, when I read it, that's, that was my take when I was reading it. Oh, we're gonna have a conversation about Sykes Store. We're not having a conversation about the library being a community center. So if there's a way to maybe twist it a little bit so that it doesn't emphasize Sykes Store immediately, it gives us, yes, it's the library, but it's the library.
So maybe you're saying put that.
Put it down for the letter.
I would sorry. Something they're not sure what to plan.
Yeah.
Personal. That would, that would be stress, stressing the library, stressing the library.
Reading it, they know this is about the library and we need to have a store connection later.
Yeah, it, you wanna draw the story and I get the whole point and the nostalgia of it, but just people, when they have two minutes, they read the first two paragraphs. And now they're gonna be like, why are we highlighting Sykes Store? Like, are they bringing Sykes Store back? Like, oh my goodness, you're gonna, you're gonna get. Don't think that.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm over Dave.
Well, that's the whole thing. It's like I think that you might run into not the thing that you are looking to run into there.
Maybe it's like the, you might be trying to learn a paragraph with up top and then.
Yep.
Like as a teenager was with the, um, seat swapping program.
Right.
Yep. Because that's kind of like a sin to like. At least go to Sykes when we need it just about anything.
And it's included, see, it's, or we, like.
I know you guys already edited this a lot, so I'm.
Now it's in a random.
Their wives.
Yeah. I just think that like when I picked it up even earlier, that was what stood out to me. It's like, oh, what are we talking about Sykes? You know, like, you know, it's. Downstairs and, and I don't know, downstairs in, in Sykes was like the hardware before Agway kind of brought themselves in. So like it was a central place to get all of your.
Where was Agway?
Agway was over here where the cross from the garage. That was Agway. Um, but that was a little bit later. So like when I was little, the only place to really go local, went to Gaspard for days. Cumberland Farms was non-existent. We had Sykes's, which was groceries. And I can't tell you the number of times that grocery shop. And then my dad would go down to the hardware section and do the hardware stuff.
It was a one-stop shop. Okay. We'll take another basket, but we'll, uh, get it going fast because we wanna get it out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And when do we think we'll have the counts?
I don't know, getting us to.
Oh, God. Yeah, okay.
I'll work on it. I mean.
I'm not, I'm not putting pressure on you. I just, I feel like I should get back in touch with John just so he doesn't think that we are backing out in case they get things coming in and he says, never mind, these people.
And if you wanna tell him, like.
I did tell.
Why we're basically in. Right. And why I'm hesitating. It's the envelopes and the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
The greenets and everything. Just to get the final count.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right.
Of course, we get, I can help decorate for the trivia.
Oh, great. Okay. Okay. So I know that Patty's gonna be there, um, second.
Hopefully.
Okay.
I have, so when we get into like November to March, um, Saturday rotations start to happen. I could bring the kids to do decorating. I don't think I would feel comfortable bringing them to a like, a meeting honestly, like. If it was here, then I would do it. If it's over there, I'll put it down. So, so we'll just kind of play it.
All right, um, so, and, and, uh, Kim McMahon sent a bunch of ideas that I think we can also pass by Patty and you. Do you, you know, which of those do you like or which you don't? And, and then get back to Kim to make sure that everybody's moved in. Okay. Um, as far as building and grounds, the updates are basically all things that Kim covered, really having to do with Bob's coming and doing the work that we've been waiting to have done forever. And so maybe like getting on it and finishing things, which is great. Is there anything winter related? You know, we have the, the gardening and the mums and all that, but winter is fast approaching. Is there anything that we should be thinking about? From a B and G standpoint, plowing, that's all.
That's all taken care of.
Taken care of.
Um, Terry Sykes does our plowing.
Somebody shovels the walkways?
Um, Bobby was. I don't, I think he's still, I see him at Walmart every now and then. He said he still wants to come and do it. So Bobby was gonna do it. And then we have, um, uh, we'll do a, a winter or fall cleanup. Kirk does that, so we're, it's pretty, pretty good.
All right.
And I think light will be in for any small projects we have.
We decorate for Christmasy.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
We don't do outdoor lights.
No.
Yeah.
You're, are you locked? Can you put them up?
No, it depends on what you want.
Oh, you're not gonna have any trees to do it, but.
If you wanna try and do that, you are more well.
I've got, I've got ample of a friend, a buddy on site. He'd be happy to do it. He walked around in circles.
I think if we can make it.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Yeah. I also have some of those cascading icicle things that these lower levels, that would look really cool.
Right.
Trust me, anything, any, because anything I could do to get away from my house, because my husband's terrified, I'm going to have a Christmas. Then I saw, I saw at BJ's catalog, but I can't find it at the store. It's very, very angry. This fall, but I keep a little red on. It's not the inflatable, no, it's just like.
Is that gonna be on our?
No. Accident. If people come down. These guys in the, my, my house is right when it goes from fifty-five to forty-four. He's talking about.
That's great.
It is, it is, it's a lot of fun. We don't do anything inside. We just do it all outside.
It's the opposite. Sorry, you know. No one sees my house, so.
Yeah. No, we, I mean, ours is a great show.
When he comes home, he looks.
I got lots of blue and white lights. Each opportunity decorated.
Yeah. We're gonna try to, if people can decorate the inside of. Holiday market just to have a little more decoration.
Yeah, that was something I think that we got last time, that it wasn't the best. Yeah, that was something that feedback we got last time, that it wasn't the best.
When, when is the holiday market?
Twenty nine, twenty nine, yeah. It's okay, we can, we can do that.
We can do it.
If it's not Thanksgiving, we can.
Since Thanksgiving is so late this year, you want to get your lights out like.
I mean.
I mean, I mean.
Um, both be um, Paul and Al, they're both um, kind of planning.
The way he.
So laid it for the uh, little parade.
Right.
So Lego themed, um, Karen was. Royals and materials and trials and so that's. Usually we use, um, Jody's mom gave us a small Christmas tree that's already decorated.
Oh, right.
And it's upstairs in the attic and alls you have to do is take it out of the bag and put it on float, if that what you want to do that. Okay. So the good news is we have up to new business and we've covered basically all the new business already and everything we talked about. Except for our new trustee candidate. So. I did look up the terms and as we explained, it's a little confusing. So. The seat, if I am this correct, the seat you would be filling would be seat number four. That seat has a term meaning um, through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, so not all that much. So you just finish that term and then at the annual meeting, you start your own term.
That seem grandable?
That's great.
Right.
Fully, right. To what I want.
Yes. So if you don't want, assuming you're on board.
I am on, I am on board.
Okay. You're gonna be sat through all this, so it's all right.
Oh, I had Kim as. So Kim was, did I get this?
No, no, but Kim, Kim left in June. Which was before Deborah left, so that's first open, I mean, that's how I'm assuming.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You're, tell you when you can leave, hurry, right?
And alright. But you're also eligible to do another term. So. Twenty thirty is when you could potentially continue.
No, so you could do. After it is, it's all right, there's still six a trial and. And that, is there two terms booked in that office if I change the office here to continue? Call the board in, board in general. And then the, the positions, you know, the opposite position, or the president, secretary of office. Uh, every year those get. In April. Yeah.
April, yeah.
That's dirty. Yeah.
I don't need to really impress people on.
So if you don't mind, just. And just make it. Tell me how, tell them.
Okay.
Any discussion. Or appointing this to whatever we're doing to.
Pointing, we're not appointing. Next.
At the annual meeting, we can do one more, one more, one more.
If she wants.
If she wishes. She gets a little better idea.
Okay, we should move forward.
Okay.
You can make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we um. Elect, is that the correct term? A point Liz Brown could take seat number four for the term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Yep.
Oh, definitely. That.
Liz, you can come back in.
Do you, um, Jen, have you been keeping track of um. The hours that of the training?
Really?
Yeah. So I need to report.
I think I was, and I think I have it. Um. We, do we. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We had the woman come in from Upper Hudson.
Yeah. She.
That was this year?
Yeah.
That was back in. Fourteen.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's training. Okay. So, sorry, I've got to report it for next year, so I just need to make sure I keep track of that we actually do this.
Yeah, we have a two hours of required continuing education to do TRS trustees. Um, and so we were just trying to remember what we did this, was it this year? Our, uh, we did a session with Upper Hudson on four fourteen. Process. Um, so the year before, we did two sessions, one on running meetings and take. My time trying to keep you on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. I got mine out yesterday, I apologize.
Um, so we do, the past few years, we've done some of the training, but we can do core trustee training, that council training as well. Um, and you can, and anything that's offered during the year counts as towards that training.
Everyone did a challenge training.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I did that with you.
Yeah.
We, yeah, if there's any kind of training for new trustees, um, you, doing the core trustee training is actually a really good one.
Come right up. Um, yeah.
And they do them virtually and they also do them, they do them both virtual and in person, so.
Summer time. Is it four? It's four, yes. Is it virtual?
It is virtual. Yeah, it is virtual.
It's really good. I love it.
They're, they're, they're very good about making sure that they keep track of time and that they don't waste your time. You know, it's definitely a.
Six o'clock.
Um, you see, nice is tough, like seven o'clock to eight thirty. It'd be for me a lot, it's thirty two. Only because of the kids, like right now, they could be in bed a half hour ago and they're, they won't go to bed.
Right, they're waiting for you to come.
They're waiting for you to come. So it's like, if you ever are interested in starting a half hour. I'll be like, yeah, um. So, yeah. Once a month, I can do like multiple times.
Yeah, we can ask about, I know some people, Simon's starting earlier.
It's probably be good for me, but Scott, I think I have.
It might, might be tougher for me only because I have my new meetings.
Yeah. Everything's uncertain, depending on what I heard, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we can also decide to do an on demand training.
Um, yeah.
Oh, it looks like they actually do core trustee training in person or virtual um, on demand. So we can ask Tim if maybe he can do it on, uh, training with you guys together at a time that works better for you. Um. But I can ask. I'll send them. Ari, if I don't remember, I'm gonna send you the Word document of this, so then you can just update the date and look at the agenda and then make any changes and things like that.
Yeah.
Super excited to have a meeting a lot about the budget.
A lot of lumber. That's gonna be good.
And then you'll have the thing.
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm not. Thank you for sending. And I'll, if I don't see it all.
Yeah.
You can also just use an alt.
Well, you have a PDF, so you can.
I think you can send the.
Yeah, but I'd rather send the one with the right.
So, does anybody have any other new business? How are you with uh, food donations and?
Yeah, oh, because I didn't do the report, so I need to have that for you.
But so the Halloween party is gonna be great. We have a lot of new fun activities this year. Um, hey, we do need some more donations of like uh, food snacks and drinks and stuff, so if anyone.
What, what do you, what do you need at this point? Do you know?
Um, chips, yeah, I have, yeah, I mean, whatever, I think anything is fine. I have a little bit of like dessert things and then um, mostly snack. I mean. But I, we never, anything is fine. In my experience, there's nothing left at the end and no one else. You know.
How many people are you expecting?
Last year we had, I think, like a hundred and fifty plus people. Um. So, yeah.
So what time do you want the food drop off?
We're gonna be setting up um, mid day, like, you know, like third, you know, catch the two.
Okay.
Um, but you can also do it the day before and then we can break it down.
Okay.
Depending on what it is. But like bagged, packaged things or just easy to serve, like Rice Krispies, that.
I was just gonna say, I will make those if you want me to.
Yeah, make whatever you want to do. Um, I have tons of like bags, chips and stuff and we have somebody bringing chocolate bars. So.
That's something.
Then. They're very good talking. Yeah.
I have a practice, no nut, no soy, no egg, no dairy. And so like I have recipes that I'm building.
So you bring examples.
You know, it's like, so I've been working on things that I can make that are really tasty for kids with allergies, sound like. Sure.
Yes, I do too.
Um, Rebecca's gonna make something and then I have like veggie sticks, you know, gluten free.
And those are great.
Snack or uh, or. Yeah, whatever you feel like, answer, sorry, it's not.
We have water, I know that usually the. Water.
Oh, um, somebody said they were gonna bring, I have bottles of water and then somebody said.
Yeah, water, you can always use water.
It's usually that we do the small bottles. Like little juice boxes or?
I think juice box is fine. Somebody said water. Anyway.
The, the arts and crafts thing, can you print color? Or do you have to print? Okay, so I'll send you the file because I have it all ready to go. You have to hit print, um, you wouldn't have to print the dice page more than once because we can just print that once or twice and eliminate. It's all the pieces.
Okay.
So if you print it, I'll start cutting.
Great.
And anybody else that wants to cut.
On, on regular paper or on?
I would.
What time do the cars usually start showing up for the trunk retreat?
Great question, um.
I've got interest from my church and maybe the federated church.
Oh, wow.
So what we told people was what, thirty?
Was the costume, so the costume contest, was it two thirty? I saw the flyer.
We're, yeah, I have to change that, it's gonna be at three. So that gives you an hour and a half to, um, for the kids.
Normally people just park and then go in and watch the, go in and join the party and then once they, once they just go to the trunk?
Yeah.
Or they don't, they just.
Or they just kind of hang outside and talk with each other. So.
Okay, well, I'll, so I'll try to, um, because the flyer you had said two thirty for the costume and then.
Yeah.
Trunk retreat afterwards, we can keep it that way. If they show up half an hour early, it's not. Because my church is interested and we've got the federated church hopefully and maybe some inner, so there's a new Valley Face cooperative going on amongst three or four churches. They were trying to find outreach uh, potential.
Okay.
Because the new Lebanon trunk retreat is on the twenty fifth, which is the Friday.
Oh, on the Friday.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's gonna be at the school this year, not in the park. Not really sure why they did that, but they, but they were over Howard.
I don't know.
No, the school always sponsored it, yes. Oh, yes, but it was in the park, it drew about two hundred plus. Oh, yeah, it was huge, enormous.
It was nothing of it.
Well, no, that's what, that was what's, we're, we're all in the level, we're like, well, and the PTA is responsible for it, we know. But why they decided to move it back to Walter B. Howard or whatever it is, I have no idea. Because that's, that's a schlep for people in Lebanon. I don't know why they decided to do it, but they did, so we're gonna get involved in that.
Just more control.
I know, park was fine. I mean, you had, they did a really good job, just lined up, went along the road there and the kids would all line up at the far end and then attack you and come. Go back and forth and we went through like a garbage can full of candy. Yeah. Of perch, oh, yeah, it was over two hundred kids. So I think the same thing is we're gonna also try and do, how many cars did they have at this last year, basically?
I wanna say seventeen?
We had about fifty.
Yeah, we don't get a huge, it's not, that's, it's always a little bit of a fear, but people usually show up, but, but it's not, definitely not fifty.
But it, it's a big deal over there.
Well, thanks for jumping up some.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to, I mean, I told them about it, so you know, this isn't, we're trying to, it's very interesting. Even times, so. Because they expressed an interest, I said, well, I don't want to get them over.
Oh, one, one other thing that I forgot to mention, if people could send uh, around the trivia information to friend networks um, to see if we can get people to sign up, that would be great.
Yeah, you were involved in the next door group.
I, I, I signed up and I've never done anything on there.
Oh, it's pretty active, it is, yeah, yeah.
You're active, Jen.
I haven't really, I've only posted one thing and, you know, I, I tried to give away a couch and everybody said, fine, when can you deliver it? I said, what, what about the term giveaway that you're not really getting here?
Yeah, if you could.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll give it next door. And then you're gonna first put them in our place.
Yeah, that's.
And then the postcards should, I think, be in this week. Maybe, um, we'll have that, have people hand out, please.
And you'll let me know if, or let Toby know if you want him to make those sometime.
Yeah. I think we'll do that closer. Thank you, Toby.
I think one, I think once these hit, if we, if we do a good job distributing them, I'll put one over in the, the Pittswood Library if they have a big bulletin board over there. And then approach it back. You've already said we're in Maverick.
Yeah, if I did Mavericks, I did the post office in Lebanon, I did this post office, I did Dave's.
Okay.
Um. I did Lee's. Laundry. I have a million of them.
These are pretty easy to print over, right? Yeah.
Oh, I see. So, yeah, so they are being mailed tomorrow.
No.
Mailed to libraries.
Uh, to the list, our list of people who are in our database, our donor database.
You say, may I say email?
Huh?
So you got that's email.
So we did that, so we sent, so what we've done, so the postcards are going out to our mailing list. Anybody that's on our mailing list that we don't have an email address for.
Oh, okay.
It's getting a postcard. So we will have plain postcards, un, unaddressed postcards, extras.
Okay.
We'll receive next week that we can give out to people, like people will put a note like, hey, hey, friend.
Yeah.
And then, um, and then we sent out, I sent out a plain text email to everybody in our donor database that has an email. Kim sent out a mail chip email to our mail chip list.
And that was just.
Yes.
How many members?
Uh.
Around that, let me.
Do we keep track of like, like the top twenty five? So do we do like Amber in something to them? So it's very personal. So last year, we split the annual appeal list out to anybody who previously donated and all of them got a personal note. Um, that held up things and also complicated the mailing house thing. Um, and then, oh Sarah, I felt like I reached, every time I said something, I had the same. I was like saying the same thing to them, you know, longer. Um, so we were thinking about not personalizing this year in the appeal letter. Um, we always personalize then the thank you as a step, but personalize and plus put a personal note. Um, the year that we did the seventy fifth, we did, um, I think we did some. We did personal reach out, I think I reached out to people by email, like separately as well, like our top donors. Because that was kind of more like a gala kind of thing. And then we did the phone calls of ceremony, which I did sort of get about that. Um, and that, we did get some people by doing that. For this, I feel like it's a little bit more of a, like, we're hoping to attract different people to it, so I'm like left inclined to want to hit. Our donor donors, that we might still just get a good annual field donation, right? I guess we'll see how this one we get. I think people that are like. Yeah, yeah. Exactly, that's what I really hope. Just like.
It's not S and M, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna do that.
Okay, let's uh. We're gonna turn the meeting officially so we can stop recording.